We'll go ahead and get started. I'm Paulette Hartman. I'm the city manager here. I've had the honor of serving as your city manager for a little over a year now. So, but I've been with the city, um, let's see, 11 years yesterday. So, uh, and before that, I was with the city in a prior time for five years. So collective total of 16 years. Anyway, that's not why y'all are here. Um, so tonight, what we wanted to do was have a town hall primarily to get input and feedback from the public about, um, regulation of short-term rentals and also, um, you know, location, zoning issues. The council has started having some discussion about regulation of short-term rentals, including the possibility of limiting zoning districts. Um, in the meantime, for, you know, ever since this kind of became a thing a few years ago, we've been monitoring area cities legislation, lawsuits that have happened as a result of that, and trying to tailor, uh, the regulations toward that to some extent, while also, we've been hearing a lot from residents, citizens who are impacted by short-term rentals in their neighborhood. So, um, tonight, the purpose is to get some input because we plan to bring a draft ordinance for the council, uh, to consider and possibly P and Z if there's zoning restrictions there in August. So, um, so we need to make sure that we've gotten sufficient input from the public. And this is also what helps make the short-term rental regulations and any zoning restrictions stand up to any challenges. It helps it because we're getting the input from the people who are impacted the most. So, uh, what we're going to do is Cory Ream, our, um, planning director, she's going to go through what, um, has been proposed and kind of what some of the other cities have done, the status of those things. Um, and then we'll open it up for questions and also input. There's a microphone over here that, uh, we can either bring to you if you need us to, or you can come up and stand at the mic. If you are not one that really likes to get up and talk on the mic and give your input, we do have some forms that were available in the front, um, that you can fill out and leave, and we will make that part of the official public input record. Also, if you think about some things after this meeting, uh, you can email, and Cory's going to put up an email, um, address or i- in her presentation that you can email, um, specific input about short-term rental regulation to. There will also be a text message that you can, or a text, uh, I don't know, I'm in my 50s, so I don't know the new lingo, but whatever, it's like a text thing, text notification thing that you can text, and it'll give you updates on where, uh, on where we are in the process. So she's going to go through all that. Um, so you can continue to email us and reach out to us with your input as you think about things, but tonight, I'm going to ask if, let Cory go through the presentation so you can kind of understand what we've looked at, where we are, and, um, then what the next steps are. Um, and then we're going to, uh, receive your input and, um, continue to do that right up until the council considers the, the regulations. So, uh, Mayor McCarty's asked to say a few words, so I'm going to ask him to come up.
I'm Jeff McCarty, Mayor of North Richardson Hills. I expect to see this kind of excitement when we go over the budget. So everybody show up for that, okay? Line at a time, all right? Okay, so I have to tell you, it was, it was funny, I, I didn't even think about short-term rentals being a thing in North Richardson Hills, actually. Um, and it kind of started really when I was walking door-to-door, and I know when, when Ricky and Russ were doing it with me too, and Matt. And when you ever went to a neighborhood in particular, um, that had one and somebody wanted to take time to talk to you, um, they would immediately go out and give you lots of comments. Um, and it really happened, four, four main things that came up, which was trash, lights, noise, parking, right? Those were kind of the ones that got repeated over and over again. And there's a gentleman that, over by Maplewood, that bought my house in 1991. It was my wife and I's first house, actually. Um, and it was right over about where the old police station was. And he said he wasn't going to come to the door, uh, except he saw on his Ring doorbell that it was me, and he said, "I, I thought it was you, uh, that I bought that house from." He goes, "Because I saw the name." And I said, "Oh, okay, yeah." He goes, "I only have a couple of things I, I want to tell you." Um, and he said, "But you see that house right over there?" And I said, "Yeah." He said, "That's a short-term rental." And, and he said, "I, I have a work truck." And he says, "If people park on the street and then they park across the street," he goes, "I can't get out to go to work with my truck." And he said, "That's a real problem for me." Um, he goes, "Now fortunately, it's, you know, normally Saturdays that are the bad days in the morning." And I went, "Hmm, this seems like a problem." So I said, "I'll, I'll kind of look into it." And so I started studying it and looking at what happened. So a friend of mine had already been telling me about, uh, short-term rental they owned in Breckenridge. And of course, kind of seems like a whole different thing because that's such a seasonal type place anyway. And I started looking at the laws, and I said, "Can you give me your laws?" So I, I reviewed Breckenridge's and, and, uh, very interesting, we could have that talk if you want. Um, they have a lot of reasons for what they did. Um, and then I checked grapevines and noticed that they tried to ban them and then got thrown down by the courts and said, "You, you can't ban them." Um, and so no matter what we end up doing, we, we can't ban them. Um, but I thought, the one thing that is the most fair thing that I looked at, I thought, you know, if they're going to hold themselves out on their main websites, that they are the largest hotel chain in the, in the world, right? Is that they should be treated like hotels, um, because they say they're competing with them, and I think there's amendment to the constitution that's kind of fair trade deal, right? Uh, so that's one of the things that I looked at. And then, of course, immediately after elected, I'll just look his way, um, he reached out to me at church. Um, I got elected on Saturday, and then he, I wasn't even in yet, and he said something to me on Sunday, I think, and I said, "I, I've got a problem." And I said, "Okay." But it didn't matter where I was in walking around, and I could point to some short-term rentals in neighborhoods where there are problems. I, there was another one that was way up north, uh, and I, I will say this, and it was on a Saturday morning, I was walking around, and there were four cars parked in the front yard, uh, at the one that the gentleman pointed out to me. Uh, obviously, those are issues that need to be addressed, and I think that we need to try to address those kinds of things from a regulatory perspective. Uh, again, not from a banning perspective, but I know the fair trade perspective of that. So the more of you that speak and, and bring things up, the better. Don't be reluctant to talk. Uh, we really do want to hear what you have to say, uh, and that is, that is why everybody's here, so we can hear that. So, anyway, having said that, we get on with the presentation. Cory, where'd you go? There you are. If you want to hit it. And again, thank y'all very much for coming, and I've got your names and faces, I'm going to take pictures and expect to see you at the budget meetings.
I promise that's not what the signup list is for. Okay, so, uh, I've been introduced already, Cory Ream, I'm the planning director. Um, I have some experience in working with short-term rentals in other communities, and so, uh, we've been working on, on this and using, uh, a bunch of feedback from other places that I've gathered as well as here. So, uh, we'll just get right into it. Um, we've already done introductions here. So I'm going to go through the agenda a little bit. I think most of you were stopped on the way in and completed the signup, uh, signup sheet, at least wrote down your name and address or neighborhood, so we can get a good idea of kind of what areas in the city that you're representing. That information is only going to be used by staff for us to maybe reach out to you in the future, to provide feedback on any draft ordinance updates or anything like that, if you'd like to stay informed. Um, additionally, out there on the table, we have surveys that you might have filled out or picked up to fill out later. One of the questions on the survey asks about where you think they might, uh, the short-term rentals might, um, be appropriate within the city and residential areas. So we have some maps out here that are, one, uh, is just the zoning district of this zoning district map of the city, and one is kind of blown up for town center to show the four , uh, subzones within the, the hometown area. So if you see notations on that survey that you don't recognize, we'll be out afterward to help, uh, explain and show some of the areas on the map, kind of talk it through after the presentation and all the public comments. So I'm going to go through, as Paulette mentioned, kind of the background and how we got to here, all the stuff that has been done to date, and the things that we're considering, considering when drafting the ordinance here. Uh, and I'll go through all the regulations that we have in the draft proposal that has been considered to date. We'll talk through next steps, and then we'll have, as, as was mentioned earlier, public comments from the audience. We always want public input in this process specifically. It is extremely important that we have input from you, whether that be in, in spoken form or in written form. I know I've received a lot of emails from you to our rentals@nrhtx email, uh, but I'll be plugging that throughout. If you have a, something that you think about later that you'd like to share, that's a great way to get ahold of us. And then we're saving all of that to preserve it for the record if we choose to move forward with a zoning update. Okay, so common complaints about short-term rentals. Mayor McCarty touched on most of these already. Um, these are uniform, these are not special for North Richardson Hills, these are the common complaints that we hear from short-term rentals across the board, wherever they are located in any city. Uh, parking, specifically with on-street parking, cars blocking driveways, uh, making the streets really congested, uh, noise, and that could be just people coming in and out of our hours of night, or from parties and large gatherings. The lighting issue definitely becomes a problem when you're using the short-term rentals for outdoor gatherings, lots of, uh, night backyard parties, pool parties, that sort of thing. Um, code violations, the trash put out the wrong day is just one of the things that I've heard, I couldn't tell you how many times. They have a rental midweek, and they put the trash out as they're required to, and then it sits there for days. Or it gets put out the day that the trash gets picked up, and it sits there for a whole week. Or they put out big, you know, boxes of trash and that sort of thing. Uh, and then a lot of short-term rentals are owned by investment groups, or even individuals who maybe lived in town before but have moved away and are out of state, which makes it really tough to deal with code violations or, uh, noise issues or anything when we don't have somebody that we can just pick up the phone and call. So these are the things that we were kind of keeping in mind as we're looking to, uh, draft short-term rental ordinance. Sorry, this is backwards here. Okay, so the options for managing short-term rentals, um, there are all sorts of different ways that you can address the problems that arise from the short-term rentals, but these are a few that are kind of consistently used or commonly used in other places. Uh, the first one is requiring a registration. Right now, we don't know where all the short-term rentals are. We have some ideas, we know some that have come up just through the complaint process, whether that be through code enforcement or the police department, but we don't have a comprehensive list, and we certainly don't have contact information for all of the owner Implementing a tracking software, um, this is a business that is probably booming right now in the software market for those, uh, companies that track short-term rentals. They do all kinds of cool features that I'll get into later when I'm going to talk about one of the things that we're proposing here. Uh, but they do scrapes of all the different websites where you might see listings for short-term rentals and consolidate all of that information, so we know what's really out there. Introducing neighborhood protections, these are the regulations that are outlined in the draft ordinance that some of you have probably seen, that we've talked about with city council in the past and have a draft on the website. These are things that might help to mitigate some of those complaints that we just kind of talked through on the last slide. Uh, increasing code monitoring, our code enforcement team is aware of some of the short-term rentals where we've had common complaints, uh, so it's another avenue that cities can use to kind of do more routine monitoring of those properties, uh, because we know there are different people in and out all the time that may or may not know the rules of the city. And then adopting zoning regulations, which I think is that kind of the final piece that Paulette mentioned, and why we have the maps out here and are specifically looking for feedback on where in the community you think might be appropriate or not for short-term So, a lot of cities have been here before us. Thankfully, we don't have to ever, you know, reinvent the wheel on these sorts of things because other cities have already gone through those challenges. Um, this is just kind of a summary of some of the cities that we've talked about. Grapevine, Arlington, Plano, Fort Worth, these are ones that other communities in Texas at least are kind of consistently looking at because they've gone through various court challenges, um, and have been fairly successful thus far. Uh, Grapevine, as Mayor McCarty mentioned, used to have an outright ban, uh, that was challenged, and they've now amended their ordinance somewhat in that they allow short-term rentals in multifamily properties. So there's some boundaries set on the, the maximum number, a community, a multifamily community has to be at least 50 units in order to participate in that, but it allows those units, uh, to then be leased out for short-term rentals within those communities as long as they don't exceed a certain percentage. Um, Arlington, this is the one that I think most cities are looking at because they kind of took the leap, uh, out, out front and, and set this, uh, zoning boundary restriction, um, to kind of prove it through the courts that cities do have the ability to regulate short-term rentals through zoning. Uh, they had an extensive multi-year process, and they reviewed a, a ton of data, uh, took a bunch of public feedback, and really showed, uh, direct link between the short-term rentals and the impacts in the community. Uh, what they did was they established that short-term rentals could, uh, would be allowed in higher density districts, but then in residential, uh, typical single-family districts, they're limited to one mile, uh, within one mile of their entertainment zone. So around all the sports facilities in Arlington, they have kind of a one-mile boundary out from that zone where the rentals are allowed in that district. That was not because necessarily they have the least impact in that area, but they looked at where the short-term rentals were existing currently and in that area, a higher percentage of homes were short-term rentals. Um, the ratio was just higher in that area, so they thought, "Well, we can, we can agree that we have a lot of short-term rentals here, we should probably allow them to operate right here, but we don't want them to just kind of proliferate through the rest of the city." Uh, Plano also went through a very extensive process with, uh, community survey, uh, they put together a task force, they had a multi-step process where they provided feedback back to the city council, uh, and they did eventually end up banning, uh, short-term rentals in their single-family residential districts. Uh, Fort Worth has done the same, uh, that is still being challenged in the courts. They've had some successful, uh, steps in the process, but I would just caution anybody that if you see a news article that says, you know, "Fort Worth prevailed," or, you know, "For, you know, court upholds Fort Worth's zoning ordinance," this is far from over. This will probably be years before we have final resolution on, on that ordinance. Okay, so taking all of those things into account, what we've seen in other places, what we've seen at the legislature each, each session, even in bills that are not passing, um, specifically the feedback that we hear from the courts on the decisions that they've made, uh, we've put together a couple of, um, or, of draft ordinance, uh, that addresses the regulation side of short-term rentals. Now, this was drafted without necessarily consideration for zoning districts, so it's written in form, if you've read it, it only talks about single-family, it doesn't, uh, mention multifamily, which has come up in some of the more recent meetings. Uh, so it's very much in draft form, and we'll be working through the process to edit that afterward, uh, after this meeting and after any other public feedback that we have. Uh, but so generally, the, the draft requirements we have for the program requires annual registration. As I mentioned a little while ago, the most important thing for us is to know that a property is a short-term rental and who to contact if we have an issue. Uh, if we don't know who they are, it can take us days or weeks to address an issue, and we want to be able to address it immediately with them. Uh, inspection required at registration, uh, just like we have for single-family rentals, it's important to inspect a home to make sure that it's up to a certain standard. Uh, with short-term rentals, there's even more reason why we want to inspect the property. Um, through the registration process, the owner would be required to submit a floor plan for their property, and that's used to calculate things like maximum occupancy, uh, to make sure that, you know, they haven't, uh, converted rooms without proper permitting and, you know, made, made extra bedrooms just so they can get the, the bed count higher. Uh, but that inspection, uh, at registration is set up so that we can make sure, okay, everything in this structure is a, has been a permitted upgrade or change, uh, we know how many bedrooms are, are located in here, so we can make sure that the occupancy is right, and then we can kind of monitor that over time. The way that the ordinance is drafted allows, not just for that initial inspection, but for inspections at the city's choice, uh, up to once per quarter. So we may not necessarily need to inspect every short-term rental once per quarter. Uh, if we have rental data and we know that they're not really renting it out very often, we've never had any complaints on it, we don't have any feedback from the neighborhood about it, it may not rise to the top of the list, but we want to have that ability to go in and inspect these properties more often because we know very likely that things may change in terms of, uh, squeezing in two bunk beds into another room to fit more beds in, or blocking windows, or things like that to try to just fit more occupancy within the home. So we want to have that ability to go in and inspect, uh, from time to time, and also to inspect based on complaints. And that could be based on complaints from the neighbors, or it could be based on a complaint even from somebody who's rented the property. So we want to be able to have that opportunity to go in and inspect, uh, really just to make sure that nothing has changed and everything is still safe for occupancy. Some of you may have been following our recent council meetings where we've talked about a single-family, uh, rental inspection program update. We do have a single-family, a long-term rental program where we require, uh, a registration and inspection. We've just gone through a process where, um, it might allow the good landlords that have had a good consistent track record with us to not need a city inspection, and they would be allowed to self-certify. So I just wanted to make it really clear that that would not apply to short-term rentals. So just in case you've heard that, um, don't, don't be afraid, that's not something that we are considering for the short-term properties. And then kind of the biggest piece of having a set of regulations in place is that we say, "Here are the rules," and an operator is willing to, uh, operate under them or not. If they don't, we have the ability to then revoke the permit. Um, I've been through this in other communities, uh, sometimes you have people that just don't follow the rules. It doesn't matter how much you work with them, they just don't follow the rules. So it's important for us to have that ability to say, "You have violated this ordinance," or "You have, you know, continually rented above the occupancy that's allowed," whatever the violation might be. Maybe they just continue to have street parking over and over. We want to be able to maybe give warnings, but then revoke the permit if necessary so that they would no longer be legally allowed to operate as a short-term rental. So what do those, uh, regulations look like that they may violate? I'm going to go through a bunch of these here, but these are all things that we've put into the draft to hopefully address those kind of six common complaints that we listed at the beginning. The biggest one, far and above, is parking. Uh, when we have short-term rentals in single-family neighborhoods, the biggest complaint is parking typically because they've been able to, um, lease out the property for way more people than would normally reside in a single-family home, and that leads to on-street parking, which though it may be legal to park on the street, obviously causes challenges for the neighborhood when it's just consistently a full street of parking. Um, and then sometimes they're trying to squeeze vehicles in, and they park too close to driveways, block mailboxes, all those sorts of things. So the draft ordinance that we have in place now limits parking to four vehicles total. Those all must be off-street. So that could be two in a garage and two in a driveway, it could be four in a driveway, however the property is set up. If the property does not fit four vehicles, they can't have four vehicles. They all have to be off-street. Uh, so no on-street parking. Uh, the next requirement here is for a local point of contact. Uh, this is something that's really important for those middle-of-the-night issues, uh, those weekend issues, uh, especially for those operators that reside outside of the state. We require the point of contact to be able to respond at any time within 60 minutes. A requirement for maintenance of records of all of the bookings and to provide that information to the city upon request. This goes, um, to the point of, uh, Mayor McCarty mentioning that if these are, um, essentially operating like a hotel or motel, we want them to also pay in hotel motel occupancy taxes, which are required, just like any other, um, hotel would pay in, 7% on the cost of those stays. So for us to be able to request records that show how many bookings they've had, um, how much they were charging for the bookings, we want to be able to prove that what they're paying in, in the hotel occupancy tax is adequate, like they're actually paying what is required for the operation that they're running in that home. The maximum occupancy is, um, kind of what I went back to on the floor plan being required. We've established in the draft a maximum occupancy of two people per bedroom plus one, uh, so that that may be somebody that could sleep on a couch or something to that effect, but there's no exceptions for additional occupancy above and beyond what are, um, what is laid out here, and we have the bedroom established, uh, by definition in the ordinance. Disallowing advertising or signage outside of the home, um, sometimes people will put a, a sign up that they advertise it, really more going into the commercial territory of trying to advertise it as a, a short-term rental on the property, so we just want to make sure that there's nothing outside the property that makes it look like a short-term rental, that causes any, um, kind of negative impact from just those walking or driving through the community. Disallowing any structures not intended for, uh, residential use. Uh, I know I've seen a lot of short-term rentals that might list a house, but then also we have a camper outback, or we have two tents set up, or any kind of method to just increase the occupancy of how many people can stay in the property. Um, we haven't seen a lot of that here, but just, you never know, and so we wanted to make sure that it's very clear that short-term rentals are only allowed, um, that the occupancy would only be allowed in structures that are designed for residential use. And the last piece here, and there's more to it, but these are kind of the highlights here, uh, is a requirement to post an informational bulletin in the home. It might seem kind of, uh, silly, but, um, I'm just going to show you here the things that we're requiring the owner to post in the home. If it's operated, you know, somewhat like a business, just like a hotel room, you'd have your information in the room for emergency information, exit points, uh, you know, that sort of thing. The biggest piece of this that I think is really important, uh, is the last bullet point here, is a statement that notifies those who are renting the property that failure to comply is a violation of city ordinance, not only for the owner, but for the renter. So the people that are there need to know, uh, "We've rented this property, they've gotten information maybe from the owner, but they need to know from us, here's what the quiet hours are, here's what your trash schedule is, here's, uh, you know, the maximum occupancy, you can't park in the street," all those things. If they violate it, they themselves are then, um, violating a city ordinance, and they can also be fined. We found a lot of, a lot of situations in, in other places where they'd say, "Well, I didn't know that, why didn't know that." Well, this makes it a requirement for the owner to put that out there so that then the renter does know that information. Uh, so, short-term rental tracking software, as I, I kind of alluded to earlier, uh, this is really an amazing technology now. Uh, we don't know what's out there, we could go to those websites, the big ones, Airbnb, the Verbo, and we can search North Richardson Hills, but if you've ever rented one of these, they don't just come out and list the property address. They don't say, "I'm at such-and-such-whatever-street, it's got some cute little name of like this quaint neighborhood," or something cute about the property, uh, and it doesn't list a property address. So we'd have to kind of look at pictures and try to identify, "Well, we think it might be this house." Well, you know, in certain areas of the city, we have several houses that might look very similar in the same community, and it's really hard to get an idea of which one specifically it is unless they have some, you know, bright colored door or some other identifying information. So the short-term rental tracking softwares, um, do data scrapes at all of these listing providers, all of the major websites, as well as even local ones. Um, the, the company that we're looking at, um, we're kind of finalizing things with, does, uh, over a thousand websites that they're scraping data on daily. So they're pulling information on every listing that's out there on any of these sites that we're aware of. If we come up with a local, a vendor that we're aware of that's doing this, we give that information to them, and they'll just add it right into their list of, of websites that they're scraping for data. This gives us the ability to know all of the ones that are out there. Um, we've gotten some good ideas. I'm not sure if you have any thoughts on how many short-term rentals you think we might have here, but, um, we've gotten some feedback from them on, on how many that, um, they believe exist currently, and it's more than I would have thought. Um, and it's some in areas that we haven't gotten any complaints about. So it's going to be, it's going to be really interesting once we get the full picture of the data of all of the rentals that are existing currently. So this will allow us to know what all is out there. But the other things that they do, um, they can, in their scrape of this data, see if anybody is listing a property that is not registered with us, one, right? So we need to make sure that everybody that's running one of these short-term rentals is registered with us and we have their information. Uh, but they also check all of our ordinance requirements. So they are checking occupancy to see if somebody is listing it for more occupancy than what they're allowed. Um, they're checking all of the different pieces of the ordinance. We have a, another piece that I didn't cover here, but, uh, language in their listing cannot include advertising the property for parties, or stuff like that, like for, for large gatherings and events, where they can't exceed the occupancy, not just at night for sleeping, but throughout the day. So if the listing that's on the website lists it for parties, that would be flagged by these, um, by the short-term rental tracking software. They also are looking at this every single day, so they can see when the property has been, uh, leased for the night, or for, you know, maybe a week out of the month, they can see which days it's taken offline, and that gives a pretty good estimate for, uh, what the total revenue is for that owner, which then in result comes into the hotel occupancy tax calculation. So we know when they're paying those taxes, is it kind of in line with what we believe we should expect from this property? And if it's not, we can take the information that we have and use that with the owner to then say, "We believe you owe us additional hotel occupancy tax." It also provides a 24-hour call center. And so for those of you who are really close by a short-term rental and you may have had issues in the past, um, the kind of the default go-to during the day is maybe to call code enforcement, but at night, there's not really a lot of, a lot you can do besides calling dispatch. And so while I know our police firm is probably happy to respond on those cases, most of them are not emergency situations, and we just want to make sure that it's documented and dealt with. So the call center option, um, allows for us to establish, um, kind of a, a protocol for certain situations, so it may be that we have it set up of, if the complaint is about noise, maybe we first reach out to that emergency point of contact, and if they don't respond, then we move to dispatch. I'm not sure what that looks like yet, but we have that flexibility within the system to establish our own processes and make sure that we're addressing things more timely. Um, they also just keep a really good log for us so that if there's a They also just keep a really good log for us, so that if there's a complaint about something on a weekend that maybe doesn't make it over to code enforcement, they can keep a record of it that this trash was put out, you know, on the wrong day, or whatever it might be, and they make sure to get that into our system so that we have it if we ever need to go to court on this property or anything, we will have a really good documented, court-admissible record. So I know I talked about the websites, but I just, I mean, when I was trying to put together a list of websites, I couldn't even narrow it down. There are so many that I'd never even heard of, and I've been working in this space a while. There are so many places out there. One of the things that people do with the short-term rentals is they'll list it on one website, then they take a listing down, and they put it on a different website, listing service, to try to avoid detection by the cities for a number of reasons. But because the software that we're looking at tracks every single day all of these websites, they already have a record for us going back two years of what they think has been rented within the community here. So I mentioned earlier that one of the really important pieces was to put this ordinance in place so that we have the ability to then revoke a permit if need be. So I'm just going to talk through what that would look like. We'll be monitoring through code enforcement for any of the violations that have kind of stemmed from one of those pieces of regulation that I've gone through to date, and then we will work really closely with the police department. Sometimes there's a call on a noise violation or something that makes it to PD at night over the weekend, whatever it might be, whatever time of day or anything. We want to make sure that that gets put into the record for this property, so that, like I mentioned, we have a really good record for, you know, 1, 2, 3 Main Street, whatever the property is. We have a full consolidated list of every complaint that's come in, whether it is from a resident, it's a police department complaint, it's a code enforcement violation notice, we have one consolidated place. And then if they come out on a noise violation, they're not, they may not, they may say, hey, you know, you need to quiet down, just like they would in any other, you know, property. But we need to make sure that that's followed up with code enforcement, and if a violation needs to be issued, that we can do that even after the fact. We may revoke a permit after multiple violations. This is written not to revoke a permit if they do the same thing three times, but just multiple things. So it could be a trash issue, it could be a parking issue, it could be an occupancy issue. It's pretty broad in that these operators have to be really sure they're complying with the city's code to avoid the revocation of a permit. And then in those situations where you have operators who continue to try to operate after they've had a permit revoked, we do have additional legal action that we can take beyond that. I know it's one of the questions that was asked at a previous council meeting, and the city attorney provided some feedback related to civil suits. It's rare, but it does happen, and just know that that process is in place. So the fun part here, zoning regulations and kind of where we go from here. These are listed as almost like a workflow here, but these are really happening simultaneously. We've had the discussions with city council so far and gotten quite a bit of feedback from them. That's where the feedback really kind of came in, that I think some of you may have reached out to them about limiting short-term rentals in single-family neighborhoods. So we're taking that feedback. This evening, we would love to hear from you, like I said, either in spoken form or written form, to get more feedback from you. We're compiling all of that information that has come in so far through email. There was a survey last fall that some of you might have participated in as well. We're taking that information into account, everything you receive here, and we're going to kind of consolidate that into a draft ordinance form. If any of you are short-term rental operators, we've had several reach out to us already that just say, hey, we want to know what's going on. I've been pleasantly surprised that the ones that I've spoken to so far have said, we think these are all reasonable accommodations in the ordinance, these are things that we're already doing. It's not those owners that we're really that worried about, it's the other ones that we need to try to find and get contact information for. But we're going to have some focus groups specifically for operators, to hear from them, hear what they have experienced, and kind of get their feedback on the draft ordinance as well. We'll then compile that into a kind of final draft ordinance, and that will be posted to the website. Those of you that have signed up, I'll have the text here on the next slide here, but there's a text that you can send rentals to this phone number 888-777, but I'll put it up here in a second. We intend to communicate out through that avenue and probably other methods to make sure that you're all aware when we have a draft listed on the website, so that you have the opportunity to really read and review that kind of final draft before it moves forward to public hearings at the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. If there's not a zoning piece of it, it won't go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, just the City Council. But if there's a desire, which I think they're very likely will be, to limit rentals to certain areas of the city by zoning district, that is a zoning regulation, and under state law needs a public hearing, so that Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. We publish those notices, but I don't know how many of you read public notices in the paper or just go look on our website? So we're going to have this text, this text method for you to get that feedback from us, so that you don't miss it when that comes about. Oh, and another thing that I kind of mentioned here, or left off here that I want to mention, we have a lot of information from, existing from our code enforcement software complaints that we can look through and make sure that we are really considering those as well in the kind of determination of where we think it might be appropriate to have short-term rentals or not. Okay, I think I've covered a lot of information here, so I'm not sure if we're ready to open up for questions. So we do have a microphone here on the side, if you'd like to come up and speak.
Since you're kind of packed in, I'm just going to go ahead and walk over to you. How's that?
I guess I missed the definition of short-term. What do you consider short-term?
Sorry, I apologize about that. Should have been on the first slide there. It is for a rental that is for less than 30 days.
Jack knows me, I've got a few comments. I'll try, I'll try and limit my comments. No, the first comment that I was going to make was, I'm a president of a homeowners' association, and one of the absolute stupid state regulations that I was complaining to Jack about was, the legislature a couple of sessions ago decided that HOAs cannot ask for either notification of or a copy of any sort of lease or rental agreement from tenants within our property association. So we have absolutely zero knowledge of any short-term rentals happening, or any ability to adequately police it, even though our CCRs ban short-term rentals. We've had overwhelming response when we surveyed our homeowners against short-term rentals. But I just want to make sure that anything in this ordinance that you're considering is not going to supersede the authority of an HOA to ban short-term rentals. So that's my first comment. My second one is more about, I realize a lot of this focus is on making sure that the rights of the neighbors are respected in terms of the nuisance that these cause, but as a frequent guest of some of these short-term rentals in other cities, I can tell you that I've experienced some nasty experiences in Airbnbs, because things like hotels are required to use certain standards for laundry sanitization, and door security, and fire alarms, and fire retardant materials, and a host of other things that are resulting from horror stories of people staying in those rooms. Airbnbs, short-term rentals, not required to do any of these things. And that's almost akin to saying, well, we don't really need health inspectors for restaurants because the Yelp ratings will control whether or not people get salmonella. So we need, if you're going to run a hotel, it needs to be treated like a hotel, and it doesn't matter what zone it's in. So that's my feedback.
So I would just, to your first point about HOAs being aware, so we went through, I can't even tell you how many different demos and discussions with the different software providers and tools that we could use to kind of monitor and track the short-term rentals. The one that we've kind of settled on, that we're working through, provides the opportunity for us to have a public-facing portal, a constituent portal, that the public would be able to see where the short-term rentals are within the community. So I would think that would be really helpful for those HOAs that do have regulations related to short-term rentals, just so you could see that they are there, they are registered with us at those certain locations. So I think that might answer your first, the first question there. It hasn't, that conversation has not come up at all. I don't believe that's the intent, no. And then, and then to your second point about the health and safety standards, I think that's one of the reasons why we want to make sure that people have the ability to then come in and inspect from time to time. If there are complaints from a tenant, they certainly have to meet all of the kind of standard health and safety pieces. I'm not sure what standards we're allowed to have in place for the short-term rentals in terms of, you know, the laundering and other things, but I know we have some of that in place for our hotels, so we can certainly look at that and see if we can make sure that some of it would still apply.
I hear you.
I just want to thank the city for taking these steps. I mean, and one comment that I would have on this enforcement, I guess code enforcement is going to count the violations that happen? Is that the way it's going to happen?
It would be tracked in the system, yes. So the software provider would be identifying some of those violations, but some of them may be identified directly from code enforcement, but they would be tracked in the system.
Would there be somebody in place to, you know, count them up?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay. I would recommend on this, on these performance issues, on the other standards, number 10 down there, you have the word "may," I'd change it to "will." That would be my comment.
I got Ray, I got Ben, and then that lady, then I'll get to you.
Thank you, Jack. So my position is that short-term rentals are transient uses. People come and go. They're not residential uses at the end of the day. They are treated like hotels. In most cities where you've seen these issues been brought up, they're asked to pay hotel occupancy taxes, hot taxes. So at the end of the day, if you're going to be a transient use, you should be treated as a commercial use. Commercial uses are not allowed in residential districts. And there are going to be some areas of the city where commercial and residential can probably coexist together, but at the end of the day, it's a commercial use and shouldn't be in a residential district. My position would be, let's keep them out of the residential districts.
Nobody clap for me, Paulette, or her, and you clap for Ray, okay? You know that, me and attorney, right, you know that when we pass it, we can't retroactively kick people out, too. Okay. Yes.
Thank you. My name's Ben White, and I'm a former HOA president, and one of the things that normally happens in HOAs is there is some knowledge of the properties that are rented and sort of guarded against by the HOA itself. There's two types of HOAs, though. There's an HOA that has a management organization handling it, and then there's an HOA that's self-handled by the occupants of the HOA itself. Those are the two really close things for you to get to know, because mostly people understand the impact of a different person living in somebody's house and what it might cause. So you need to, I would say, go out and talk to those HOAs, or at least give them an input that would allow them to have input into this. Secondly, I think the city has a rule on occupancy that says multiple families cannot live in a facility. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I don't know that off the top of my head. I think there have been some...
I think we should, if we do allow for that to happen, I think we should say there is no multiple occupancies of families in a short-term rental. Okay? That's all I have.
Thank you, Ben. I know Fort Worth has, they match you all like four surnames or something, is what they do.
So just to address that, so I think what you're referring to, so a lot of our residential zoning districts are considered single-family residential zoning, and used to, cities could enforce that, just like you're saying, to where if it was determined that there was more than one family living in a single-family residential home, we could enforce that issue. But that's been challenged, like so many things in the courts over the years, and so that's not something that we can enforce as strictly as we might have used to been able to. In fact, I know it's become a huge issue in College Station. My son's a graduate of Texas A&amp;M, and he expected some whoops there to get any. But anyway, they have an issue there that they've had to actually loosen their restrictions on the number of people related that can live in homes because of this issue. But I think that's what you're referring to. Other than that, we don't have anything specifically in our code that says it has to be the same family other than single-family residential zones. Yeah.
Okay, so I went on the Airbnb website last night in anticipation of this meeting, and there are nine Airbnbs listing, listed in, I would say, two-block radius of my house. Several I recognize, because I walk every night, and I'm shocked that they are Airbnbs. One, however, I'm very familiar with, which is directly across the street from me. We have all the issues, the parking, the garbage, the noise, the way too many people, cops have been called. But this house across the street from where I live is right next door to an at-home daycare, which I haven't heard anybody mention, anything about at-home daycare situations in the city. I use, my family and I, we use Airbnbs also when we go on vacation sometimes. We have been in neighborhoods, but we are great guests. We aren't loud, we don't drink, we don't put garbage out on the street overflowing, we park where we're told to park, we follow all the rules that the Airbnb hosts tell us to do. And that's not what's happening in the house across the street from me, which also is using their garage as a bedroom. So since I found this house on the website, I know a whole lot about it and what they're, what they are advertising.
We may have already received information on that property, it sounds familiar, but if not, if you wouldn't mind...
Is it blaring white?
You would...
Is it a very white house, painted white, that just was flipped last year?
Don't recall, I just remember the garage, the mention of the garage use, so certainly liked that feedback.
This is why we're trying to do the ordinance, by the way. All right, one more on this side, then I'll go to that side, okay? Because y'all are getting cheated.
Hi. Hi, my name's Stephanie. I want to thank the city again for this meeting. We had an Airbnb across the street from us as well, and all of these issues, and I'm not, maybe some people are familiar with this, but we gave the host an opportunity to change some things, and he didn't. So we just went ahead and went on to Airbnb, and myself and my neighbor complained and was very thorough about that, and they completely got delisted from Airbnb. So I know sometimes with the city, things take time, but if you're in a dire, desperate situation, you can go through Airbnb and make complaints, your neighbors can, and they can be completely delisted. So I just want to offer that, because I am sympathetic to those problems. But the Airbnb owner did eventually come back to us and was at kind of our mercy of what we wanted to see, which was all the things that you guys already suggested, and we haven't had problems since. So we allowed them to get back on Airbnb, so that was just a suggestion.
And they actually also work together, so if you have a property that's delisted with Airbnb, they are also removed from Verbo.
That was really good advice, by the way.
Hi, I went online, and I was looking at the different kinds of zonings for single-family, and there's one called mixed. And when I looked further, all of us that live near the Iron Horse Golf Course, at least on one site, are considered mixed. Now generally, if you're living near a golf course, it's a benefit to your property. But if mixed is not covered under single-family, it's a disadvantage to live next to a golf course. So do you have any idea whether any of that plays out? Do I have good information or not?
Yeah, I can look at the map with you if you want to afterward, we can look at the map and kind of see where you are and what zoning district that you're falling into. I'm not sure exactly, I'd have to look at the map. But we haven't proposed, or at least there's not anything under consideration right now with the zoning regulation. We've talked about it in theory, and we would like to get feedback here. I think it's pretty clear on your survey, if you were just saying, you know, if you want to give them more specific information, you can, but if you just want to talk about specifically single-family, the areas that we tried to identify separately on the checklist were those kind of mixed-use areas, like within hometown, or within the TOD areas, or transit-oriented development areas near each of the stations. But we definitely, again, this is kind of a work in progress, since we have something put together, we'll put it out for public input, and there will be public hearings at both of those meetings as well to get more feedback, to make sure we're not, you know, accidentally doing something that might negatively impact you.
Thank you, and thanks for putting this all together. Sincerely appreciate it. So, as you speak about zoning regulations, so a house on the street adjacent from me, kind of sit on the tee, but it's a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, listed as a five-bedroom, sleeps fifteen. Yeah, and it's totally chaotic, but I have some other stuff I think I'd like to email you, too, because Air DNA is a great search engine for that, you know, and it breaks it down. I'm looking at, what I see, active listings as of May in North Richland Hills is 209.
I don't think that's very far, I think that's pretty, that's pretty close to what we're thinking in number. A lot of them, a lot of properties may have eight or 10 different listings on different websites, so I don't want to make you all think that there's over 200 properties, but...
They broke it down. So, 209 active listings, 55% of that is on Airbnb only, 8% is on VRBO only, and 37% on both. So, they, anyway, holler at me, I work for a tech company. And then, something else that we, no one's mentioned or discussed, a couple of things. So, like Plano, Richardson, in Dallas, have had several instances of sex trafficking busts taking place in Airbnbs for prostitution rings, as well as drug manufacturing and drug distribution. This is all inside of residential neighborhoods. In my neighborhood, we have several families, which I went to see in North Richland Hills, as families, not commercial enterprises in my neighborhood. I didn't move to North Richland Hills to live in a motel district. But if they're, if I were, if I were a predator and I moved to North Richland Hills, I would have to register myself, okay? If someone rents a home in North Richland Hills, they have to register as well. With the traffic flowing in and out of these houses, especially on the one that's close to me, and this lady sitting next to us, we have no clue, you know, what's coming, what's going. And when you have small children, and even teenage, boys and girls, that's spooky. So, we need to take all of that into consideration, too. And, you know, I understand that you cannot ban, but, you know, put them in a commercial zone is what I'm for.
Thank you.
Hi there, everyone. Sounds like I'm the only short-term rental operator here. So, I actually haven't opened my short-term rental in North Richland Hills yet, but I've had one in Waco for three and a half years. I have over 55-star reviews, and I've never had one complaint in my neighborhood. And so, I just want to bring it up that there are responsible hosts out there. There's a couple of things that I do to ensure that that neighborhood does not get disrupted. So, the number-one thing is noise-aware, which tracks the decibels of the sound inside and outside of my property. I have cameras at the front and the back doors, and I pay my neighbors to roll the trash on the days. I don't ask the people who are on vacation to deal with trash. Obviously, a lot of hosts are not at my level, but I just feel that putting an outright ban is against my property rights. And I will also say that, so I bought in a multifamily district. By default, all of those properties are businesses. So, including that as a single-family residence is not correct. Everybody who owns those are making money off of them. So, those are my main things. But I also would like to say that in Waco, they had a special permit system so that everybody within X amount of feet, I think it was 500 feet, they would send out a letter and say so-and-so is applying for a permit. And then, the neighbors, if they did not like that, they could go and speak at the public hearing and give their opinions. And I will tell you that when I applied for my permit, my neighbors all came together and said, "We don't want it." And so, I went and talked to every single one of them, and I was able to, you know, tell them what I planned to do. And like I said, it's been three and a half years, no issues with them at all. So, I would love to help you guys with this regulations, and I do think that regulations are needed, definitely.
If we have any other operators in the audience that don't want to admit that they are operators in this group, feel free to fill out one of the surveys and put your contact information down that you're an operator. We only have a little bit of contact information for the operators currently, and we want to make sure to hear from as many as we can through that focus group process.
Hi, my name is Dale Henry. I've lived at 4913 Skylark Circle for 35 years. I currently serve as the president of the Skylark Circle Community Improvement Association. It's a small but close-knit HOA of 87 homes that borders the Iron Horse Golf Course. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. Our covenants and deed restrictions were written in the mid-'80s, and long before the short-term rentals were on anybody's radar. And so, as a result, we have two SCRs, short-term rentals, that have recently appeared in our neighborhood. And while these rentals offer convenience for travelers and attractive returns for investors, they also introduce, you know, what we think are serious risks to the stability and safety of our neighborhood. Our concern isn't theoretical, it's practical. We don't want to face late-night parties, increased traffic, or revolving door of unfamiliar guests who have little connection or concern for our community. Our residents chose this neighborhood for its residential character, its stability, and sense of security that comes from knowing your neighbors, and I feel like the short-term rentals threaten that. They turn homes into commercial properties and neighborhoods into transit spaces, undermining the trust and cohesion that define a strong community. So, we're also concerned about enforcement, and of course, the city's been talking about that. So, I'll go on. I just want to say that we're not anti-growth, we welcome, we welcome visitors to our city. We don't, we believe the needs of the full-time residents, those who live here, raise families here, and contribute daily to the life, and the city should come first. So, we respectfully urge the city to implement the stronger regulations on short-term rentals, and let's all work together to improve the integrity, stability, and livability of our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Wow, so much to say, so little time, right? I'm Robin Carragher, I'm a real estate investor. I don't have any short-term rentals, but I'm generally pro-short-term rentals, though. So, I love it that my friend up in the front there, I didn't catch her name, that has the short-term rental in Waco, I love what she said. I also like what you said. I think, I think maybe the city should also develop a list of best practices for short-term rentals. He mentioned knowing your neighbors, I think that's very important. I'm also a grandfather. I know I don't look that, that I'm not old enough to have grandchildren, but I'm also a grandfather, and the kids, the grandkids come to my house a lot, and I'm like, yeah, I would really, it would be really cool if there was a possibility. And again, I don't have any STR, so I don't know if Airbnb, or Verbo, or any of these other platforms have any facilities or any utilities or whatever for checking people's backgrounds that are going to come live in their short-term rentals. But even, even though it's short-term, still, short-term, it doesn't take long to commit a crime or to do something, et cetera. I, on the other side of the coin, speaking more like a real estate investor, I really don't see an issue, I think, by the way, y'all's list of things that you've proposed there, I think almost all of them are good. The parking thing, eh, I'm kind of like, well, if it's legal to park on the street for anybody, then it should be legal to park on the street for short-term rentals, so long as they don't violate the city's ordinances, right? The guy across the street from me parks on the street, or I don't know, there's four or five people that live there, and I don't, I don't know what they're doing in that house, actually. But there's always a car, so I have to be really careful when I back out, you know, so that I don't hit them, right? So, anyway, but that's, that's a couple of thoughts. There's, I have so many more thoughts, but I would, I'd like to understand the logic of why treat short-term rentals differently with regard to parking on the street as opposed to anybody else. That would be, that would be interesting, so.
I won't waste time echoing a lot of the things that have been said, but I would like to add two others. Enforcement, how, really look into how enforcement's going to be handled. Several complaints in my neighborhood have already been made, not only on short-term rentals, but just people who live there regarding parking, regarding trash. Nothing happens. The second one would be safety, kind of hit on here. Next to one of the short-term rentals in my neighborhood are elderly people that live there. They're not technology-advanced, they don't have cameras, they don't have security, and all that extra stuff. The neighborhood is an old neighborhood, most everybody in the neighborhood has four-foot cyclone fences. So, if you're going to have to leave those established short-term rentals in the neighborhoods, I think maybe we need to consider higher fences in their backyards, or some type of security for the neighbors that have been living there for 60 years.
Hello, everybody. I guess my question is, as a resident of North Richland Hills, what, what brings the people to North, who needs a short-term rental? I mean, it's not like we live in Breckenridge, Colorado, I'm going on vacation. Arlington, you know, we've got the, all the things that happen, you know, in Arlington with entertainment centers. North Richland Hills doesn't have a lot of hotels, you know, so if I was going to go on a short-term rental, I'm going to a hotel. So, I'm curious, ask maybe some of the other people, what, why do people rent a short-term rental for 30 days? Okay, well, that, and that's why, and that's why I asked that question, so, okay, well, and I'm just, that was just a good question. Then, what's the difference between a short-term rental and a bed and breakfast?
One, you get food, the other one you don't, I don't know.
So, I don't know the bed and breakfast definition off the top of my head, but there, there are some slight distinctions. Typically, a bed and breakfast may provide kind of like a cafeteria-style or joint breakfast meal for individuals that are renting rooms out, rather than somebody renting the whole home or a portion of the home. Yeah, I, yeah, so I have this up on my screen, and I can't see the ordinance, so when you guys are making references to it, I'm trying to just remember in my head what it says, sorry. It is, it is on the website, though, in the draft. Yeah, I don't know the easiest way to get to it, so, it was pushed out in a news flash that went out on the, actually, let me just end this here. Yes, it was linked in the news flash here that went out, kind of alerting people about this. There is, I'm trying to think if you just search on the website, short-term rentals or rentals. Mary, do you know the link for that?
Okay. Mary, since it was in the news flash, I'm not talking to some invisible person, this is Mary Peters, she's our communications director, but is it on the web, main website? But what we can do after this meeting is we can put this all in a prominent place on our website so that you all can get to it. But it probably was in our news flash section of the, NRHTX.com slash STR, and that should take you to the current draft ordinance, as well as summary of some information that was also in the news flash that went out. But we'll also make sure that that is placed in a prominent place on the, when you go to our homepage.
So, so real quick, I just looked up, and I let my friendly AI person tell me here, it's not Velma, by the way, but a B&amp;B is owner-hosted, somebody lives on-site and host, a short-term rental does not.
We do have in the, in the ordinance, there's also some distinctions for those short-term rentals that are owner-occupied, where they're just renting a room out. We have different rules on what we can and can't regulate on those. And so, in those instances, the owner would be able to park in the street, just, you know, as long as on-street parking is allowed and that sort of thing. So, this is a link to that page on the website, the NRHTX.com/STR. I believe it is, this has the email address here as well, and then if you scroll down to the draft short-term rental ordinance, this is the link to the draft that many of you have printed off, it seems like, and have read through. But that's, that's a draft, it's still in progress. We've made some tweaks to it just even after the meeting, and I'm sure we'll make more after this evening.
My name is Brett Hayes. I am a operator. Sounds very official, but I want to tell you a little about myself. I am married, I have three young kids, I live local, I'm not a big conglomerate who's trying to price gouge everybody, but I do it with my family. To answer your question, you talked about who stays at these properties. I have a lot of locals who stay here to visit family. I had someone who was here for a 10-day church event, baseball tournaments, insurance problems. It's pretty much locals staying with locals. In terms of issues with the four-minute issues that were brought up with, I wrote it down, trash, lights, noise, and parking, as an Airbnb owner, parties are the worst thing you could possibly have at your property. There are rules and regulations that we put on our property to not allow that to happen. How do we monitor that? Well, first of all, I agree with all the ordinances that need to be in place. I think rules are a really good thing to weed out all the bad actors in all of this. How do we operate our rules? We have security monitors to make sure that property are being used correctly with regards to trash. We have an app called Hospitable, which sends out messaging and reminds tenants when trash days are, how to, where to put the trash, where to bring the trash back to. I believe that North Richland Hills has a noise ordinance from 10 o'clock to 7 o'clock already. That is also displayed, and we have had zero issues with our tenants. Anyone who might have questions, I'd be more than willing to answer when we're done here personally. But I think it would be a mistake to ban them and keep them to the commercial route, not the residential. A quick Google search with the AI tool, I believe it said there's 209 roughly Airbnb units. There are 71,000 people that live in North Richland Hills, 29,000 units where people can live. That comes out to a .007% of Airbnbs in the city. That being said, I think it can be, you know, the rules can be put in place, just like the rules of a daycare center, which is a very important thing, but I think there should be rules that we need to follow. And I think, I read through all the rules, I think they're great, would be more than willing to abide by them. And then, with regards to the last thing, sanitation, I know that was kind of the first thing that got brought up. As an Airbnb host, we live and die by our reviews. If we have a place that is not clean, that's not to standards, we get bad reviews. And with bad reviews comes no guests. And on the flip side, we can write reviews on our guests. So, if guests come, they do not take care of the place, they do not follow the rules, we give these people bad reviews. So, other Airbnb hosts will know when a bad person is trying to rent their place. So, there's a lot of things that people are unaware of, that I had to learn along the way, that is put in place to protect the neighborhood. And I also feel that as an owner, it's my duty to talk to my neighbors, communicate, and have an open, you know, conversation with them, and make sure they have my phone number, so that if there are any issues, that we take care of it, because I think it is important to be good people in our neighborhood. So, thank you, and I appreciate you guys doing this.
Thank you.
My name is Kelly Beebe, and...
My name is Kelly Beebe, and, uh, I have a personal family, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, personal family experience with this situation. Uh, my wife, uh, her family owned a property, uh, north of Pittsburgh, uh, on the lake. It, it was a HOA with maybe 30 or 40 homes, and they had an HOA for, for several years. Uh, and then the party crowd from Pittsburgh came up and it got really out of hand. And they tried to cite them, to do, they tried to get it under control, they eventually had to ban it. Yes, it's been a few years, but at that time, in Pennsylvania, you could ban it. But, um, the reason that I took the mic is they did try to do some peculiar things. Now, you're going to sound like I'm making this up, but I'm not. And, and neither one of these things worked, but I bring it up that you have it in mind when you write regulations. The first thing they did, they also had a definition of short-term rentals. I don't know what it was, so I'll say 30 days. So there was enterprising people who tried to do 31 days to show you. And they would get, they would make it work by subletting to people. Okay, and they tried to get around it that way. Now, uh, the pe- people who lived in the organization caught on to that, got lawyers involved, and that was squashed. It didn't work, but just have that in mind when you're writing regulations.
Two questions. First, uh, people who rent their house out for the evening or for the night for pool parties, is that considered short-term rental?
So we have not addressed, we've been discussing it, but we have not worked it into the ordinance, uh, to deal with those properties that are specifically renting out pools, uh, just the pools and not the home.
We have issues around graduation time.
For, for homes that are renting a home out with a pool, uh, we have had some discussions about the classification of that pool, um, likely changing from a residential to a semi-public pool, which has different requirements for inspections, uh, and testing. And so, um, we haven't, haven't gotten all the final details, uh, worked into the ordinance, but it has been something that we've been discussing internally.
The other question is, can an HOA or deed restrictions legally stop someone from renting their property?
I, I'm, I'm not going to speak to the, to the legality of any of those, I would just say that, um, city ordinances and, and your deed restrictions don't have to align. Sometimes you might have things in place that we don't, uh, that we can't regulate or vice versa, so, um, I think our, our goal would just be to make sure that we have the information available to you for you to use, uh, within your HOAs, however you see fit.
I've lived next door to the five-bedroom, 15, sleeps 15-person Airbnb. Um, it has noise aware, it doesn't seem to make a difference. People come in late, they're not in a hotel, they're not hotel quiet, it wakes us up. They leave at 4 o'clock on a Sunday morning and they're loading up and telling the kids to grab something, they're not being quiet. Um, a party, or somebody wasn't paying attention, they hit the retaining wall of the house, the rental house, 3 or 4 o'clock in the morning, woke us up. The noise aware doesn't work, and if you Google and look, there's all sorts of people trying to find ways to get out around it. It probably won't long, be long before they can. Our house is all back up, and so when they're having pool parties, even if the noise aware doesn't catch it, sometimes the reverb comes through the ground enough that it's kind of like I could feel my bed just barely vibrating, and you can't really sleep like that. And, and if y'all don't live next door to one of these, you really don't understand what it's like. You can own one and say you're not getting complaints, but complaining to the Airbnb and VRBO doesn't really seem to get anywhere. I have tried.
Hi, yeah, so my name's Stephen Linverde, I have a, um, Airbnb on my street, and we have kind of, you know, it's kind of a dead-end street and takes a little bit to get to it, and most people, by the time they get there, are done traveling the neighborhood and just race down the road. And I have four kids, we're friends with our neighbors across the street and all around the neighborhood, so we have kids running around all the time. We're outside all the time, and it's just become almost a standard practice to have to yell at them to slow down because they're going 45 in a residential neighborhood, right? And they don't care, you know, I've given flipped off hundreds of times, they don't care, they're going to do whatever they want to do, right? And that, that's my biggest problem with it, is that, you know, it's transient, those cars are flying in and out of the neighborhood. You know, the, the owner, they're, had a pool, and, uh, their fence got knocked down from a storm, uh, a year or so ago, and he refused to get it fixed, and, um, you know, it went months with it blown over. You know, the neighbor next door was calling, texting, and he was like, "It's not my problem." But he has a pool, right? And so it's like, oh, well, you know, you have a pool exposed with children that run around the neighborhood. Um, he just doesn't care, he lives in Washington, said it wasn't his, his problem. Um, and so, I, you know, you can say you're a good owner, but like, or it's your property rights, but what about my property rights to live in a neighborhood where I don't have to be in fear of random people swinging down the road just to get to their rental house? And, um, you know, I'm strongly in favor of not having them in, you know, single-family neighborhoods. I think there is a place for them, and I believe that is in commercial districts, right? Um, or, you know, places where it makes sense for them to belong, but, you know, a hotel in a neighborhood isn't one. Thank you.
Thank you. Here, and then you.
Hi, have you, has anybody done any studies or seen any studies that, uh, report the effect of property values when these, um, short-term rentals are in the neighborhood? And if not, I think there must be some that have done that, you should find that out. Does anybody know?
We have not, I know we haven't done any studies internally, I'm not sure if that, that exists.
I would just, I would suggest then, that whoever has a short-term rental in their neighborhood be compensated by the, the amount of reduction in property values, um, by the owners of the Airbnbs or the short-term rentals.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Gary Verger, I'm the president of my HOA. It's a, uh, we're a self-maintained, self-managed HOA, we're short. Only 19 homes in the very north end of North Richland Hills. We've talked a lot about investor occupied, so, and in my neighborhood, on my street, we're getting calls once a week, at least once a week, people wanting to buy our homes, and they are from overseas, so we know they're external investors, they're not local like you guys. These are people just trying to find a lot of properties, and we know what they want to do. So it's how we control that. The other thing is, what about owner-occupied, um, s- short rentals? What I'm talking about, maybe the Super Bowl's coming in town, or some of the big event, I'm going to get out of town, I want to be here, so I'll rent my home out. Have we thought about how we cover for that? That's one thing. And then, um, also, uh, what, shouldn't there be an adult on the premises? Because a lot of times they'll rent these out for maybe their college kids, it might be under age 18 or whatever, or high school kids because they want to party. He rented out under the adult's name, but they're never there, we see that, I've seen that happen a lot of times. So it's my question also. And, uh, one of the gentlemen asked about, as far as, uh, the laws. If it's not in your bylaws, you cannot change your bylaws to put it in there, but you can't alter anything that's kind of close to that, because I've looked into that. Uh, and one of the things in our bylaws is you have to have, you have to be a, uh, single family, so you all have to be related as a family. You could probably have your parents there, but you can't be bringing in the cousins or anyone else to all live in your home. So you can't bring a bunch of people to be in that home, so I, I have looked into that, anyway.
You know, just bring up the point that he did, just so y'all know, that when the World Cup is here next July, um, we, there's not enough police in the world to actually monitor what happens during those few weeks, because it's going to be crazy.
I'm wondering if there's any requirement, current regulation, or anything that we can hang our hats on in regard to informing potential home buyers that they are buying into a residential area that allows for these things to be happening? Is there some kind of requirement in the title records at the title company? Or are realtors required to disclose this to potential buyers, that this is going to happen in their neighborhood possibly?
No, I don't believe there's any, anything that would require that.
Hi, my name is Janice Green, and I have a comment. Um, I live in the neighborhood that has been mentioned several times, um, with the five-bedroom, that's really a three-bedroom. One of my concerns that I saw listed in your presentation that I haven't heard addressed is the percentage of, um, short-term rentals. So if we do get to a point, um, I personally don't believe that they belong in single-family neighborhoods, and that would be my inclination. But if we do get to a point where we're going to see that happen, um, I live in a relatively small neighborhood, it's a couple hundred houses, maybe less than 200. There are four in my neighborhood, that, that's a, that, to me, that's a fair percentage. Um, and then my other concern that I'd like to address is that, um, with our short-term rentals, we are serving the other communities around us that have put, um, regulations on their short-term rentals. So our city is functioning as a hotel provider, as, uh, a disparate rooms spread all across the city in what should be a hotel, where the city should be making the revenue for it. And I can see that you've addressed the revenue issue in the guidelines. Um, but, uh, as a city who is ultimately providing hotel rooms, we should be making and earning those revenues. Um, so that is something I also support. Um, thank you.
The reference to percentage that we had listed here was specific to, um, Grapevine's ordinance, and theirs was a percentage for multifamily units. So we haven't to date talked about percentages of single-family, it was just so that an entire complex wouldn't turn into a short-term rental, just specific units within the building.
Yeah, I've heard the, uh, the term multifamily used a couple times. Do we have a definition for multifamily?
It's, it's more than four units, so
More than four.
Single-family duplex, triplex, fourplex are treated as single-family in North Richland Hills and, and happen, that's not a change that we're proposing, but the multifamily is, is kind of above, above four units.
And also, I don't, I don't think I heard anything similar to what Arlington has done, suggested for North Richland Hills, like a mile within whatever district or anything along those lines. Is that, is that being considered, or?
That's not something that's been proposed as part of the regulations yet, although I will say the mayor and council, um, have expressed some interest in some zoning restrictions related to short-term rentals. And so that's why we're having this meeting, to be able to understand, uh, the impact that it has and, and have some justification for putting those things in place.
Because I commend the city for some of the brand-new entertainment venues that we've got, Malibu Jack's, the Peppa Pig thing, you know, we already have NRH2O for a long time. We're turning into a little bit of an entertainment, you know, city, which I think is great, you know? And so maybe that's an important thing for us to consider, you know, so.
Yeah, we'll take a few more comments and then we'll kind of wrap it up.
I just wanted to reiterate what's already been said, uh, with regard to keeping them in or out of single-residence areas, as well as treating them like businesses and taxing them as such for the, the added revenue for the businesses that they're operating.
You're getting your stance in. Hi, um, one thing I just wanted to say, and maybe this seems rude and not meant rude, but just reality. When you speak of the percentage of houses, that, uh, it's a little like the definition of a major surgery. It's major if it's you, it's minor if it's somebody else. Um, we have a situation across the street from my driveway, and so it's very loud. Uh, they park on both sides of the streets, they have been known, uh, there's only one way in and out, there's only one point of ingress and egress. They have completely sideways parked to block the street. And yet I will say that when the police have been called, it's almost at times like they have a scanner. And they go, they scatter inside, and the police come and knock on the door and talk, and then the police leave, and son of a gun, they're back outside, they're roaming in the yards, they're peeling out. Um, one time I'm specifically thinking of, it didn't start till 11:45, not a good time. Uh, we've had a drone from the home in question coming over our houses. That would appear to be an invasion of our privacy. We only have 15 houses in our neighborhood, so it's a pretty close-knit group. Um, and as has been mentioned with some others, you, you purposely have built or purchased in the area of a single-family dwelling. Um, I will say, we've, golly, we have had, we've had to call the police. I don't know that that's the best use of their time, you would think that we could have to increase the police department to cover it all. Also, the owners of the home do not live in North Richland Hills, they're not overseas, but they don't live in North Richland Hills. It shouldn't be my job, my neighbor's job, to be overlooking this house and having to report it to them, to report it to the police. They never check on it. They had a party knowingly for a 21, 21st birthday. And one of the comments made was, "I'll call the mom and let her know." It was a mess. Um, again, it's its own single, single-family, not commercial, and while I could say more, I'll just end with, I never dreamt we'd have this issue in North Richland Hills. I really never thought we'd have it in Carson Court. Thank you.
I'll get to you, and then Henry, okay? And you'll, you'll wrap us up.
I, I know we're talking about the small percentage of how many people live in there here versus the short-term rentals. Just from my area, the 15 occupancy, there's at least eight people here. So it might just be one house, but how many are each of these going to be affecting? And that's just who's here, not who couldn't make it.
I think, before I give to Henry and he wraps up, with the, we see the local folks that are taking care of the, the two that talk, um, which in a good sense, they're local, and part of the problems that everybody has from our witness perspective is why we want somebody local is, and I think you said the trash wasn't addressed at multiple times. That's because there's no one that cares, because they live in Los Angeles, they live in Boston or whatever, and they're not listening. These folks are local and they care, so we have to keep in mind, there are people that are here that care.
Pressure's on, huh? I have two questions. One, on the inspections, you mentioned it could be quarterly, but will there be an an, uh, annual inspection?
The way the ordinance is drafted currently is that upon initial, uh, registration, there would be a required inspection, and that the city has the ability to inspect every quarter as long as they continue to be registered with us, um, or upon any complaints, even more often than that. And so whatever is determined by code to be a more, you know, the most appropriate timing, it could be quarterly, it could be twice a year, it could be annually, I'm not sure what that looks like yet, but the, the way it's drafted allows for up to quarterly inspections.
But not, um, specifically stated that it will be a quarterly inspection?
That's correct, it's, it says May, uh, so the city would have that ability to make that decision, uh, based on, you know, inspection load and how many rentals there are, and maybe, there may be more of a risk-based, or that kind of, the ones where we've seen more issues in certain areas, where we've had more complaints, even maybe not specifically on that property, that they may be inspected more often than others.
Well, in my opinion, it needs to be required that it be an annual inspection. Second question, uh, Jack, how am I, am I doing okay? Okay. Could it be required that when the property is certified as a short-term rental, that they report that there are no, that there are, that that dwelling is not in an HOA that prohibits short-term rentals?
Yeah, I mean, so, I mean typically, cities aren't going to say, "We'll enforce your, you know, CCRs for your HOA." We typically say that, we might have a reminder, you know, you might need to check with your HOA if you have one, but those are kind of two separate sets of regulations, whatever your HOA...
Well, my question is, could that be a requirement?
Well, what we could do is, is make sure that the HOAs that we are aware of, and I think we know all the HOA, the official HOAs in the city, know when they apply and can, and can check off whether they're allowed, because HOAs, and to John's comment earlier, I don't think this mayor and city council is interested in doing anything that would preempt an HOA's ability to enforce some things in their authority, because in many, many instances, you all have way more authority than cities do. And that's why people pay to be in an HOA. So, so having said that, we would also want to work in partnership with you to be able to comply with your ordinances, also with your CCNRs. And the other thing is, it's different, I've heard different things for what HOAs can do. They can ban them, they can also limit the percentage of even rental properties in the HOA neighborhood and those types of things. Those are things that cities can't even think about doing if we wanted to. We could limit the zoning, probably, but, but anyway, that said, we can certainly look at some ways to draft in the ordinance and into our process to inform HOAs when these are being applied for, and make sure that they're in compliance with your, you can make sure they're in compliance with your CCNRs. As Corey said, cities can't enforce your HOA rules for you, in fact, prohibited, but...
Not asking that, but we need to know, you need to know whether the dwelling that's being approved or not is in an HOA that prohibits short-term rentals.
Yeah. I agree, totally. So I think that's going to wrap it up. I'll just say, so as we've said, this is just a draft that's been proposed, there'll be changes made based on the input that we've received, and that's what will be sent forward to the city council, and anything that has a zoning restriction would go to the P and Z first. And so I would look for those to start coming forward in August sometime, and we're also doing budget, so yes, as the mayor said, we may send out a notice to all of you, come and hear about the budget, too. But anyways, so just know that, and know that we are, we remain open to your comments and suggestions and input as you look at this issue further and think about everything you've heard tonight. You can email the rentals@NRHTX.com that Corey put up there. You can also email us directly, so Corey is, most of us are first initial, our last name, and then @NRHTX.com. Mine's a little different, it's PA Hartman@NRHTX.com if you want to email me directly, you can email Corey. If you have code questions after we break up, is Stephanie still here? Stephanie Martinez, our managing director of community development, is here, and she oversees our code enforcement department. So if there are specific properties that you would like code to take a look at, or you're wondering if they have, she may be able to help answer those questions. Our police chief, Jeff Garner, is also here and can answer questions that you have. So we'll kind of remain, if you have more questions, if you want to look at the zoning map, Corey can help answer questions about what area you're in and what that zoning is. But I just want to thank y'all for coming tonight and for providing your input, and I want, I encourage you to stay engaged in not just this process, but anytime we open up, you know, and ask for your input, we ask for it because we want it, and we care about what your concerns are. And you're going to hear, my motto to the staff is, "We work for the people that live in the houses." That doesn't mean that we don't also work for the businesses in our city, because we do, but our primary responsibility, and I think somebody said it, is to the people who live here, and have lived here, and live and raise their families here. So thank you, appreciate it.
Let me say one quick thing. Thank you two for coming. You knew where you were walking into. That was one. And the other is, I was afraid that people weren't going to speak up, I was completely wrong about that. And I want to put a finer point on something that Ray and I just kind of passed back and forth. Ones that are already in place, that are, that are Airbnbs or whatever, short-term rentals that are already in place, we probably can't do anything about them, other than bring them under regulation. Even if we zone the residentials away, some of those are going to have to stay. Now, you know some of those are going to be bad, and they're going to be, they may have to work their way out. So everybody needs to be patient, but a lot of those, we would experience bad things. So we could talk afterwards if you want.